Before the hearing. Before the hearing. Well, because we can't, we can't accept. We have to do it first. I know, but that's the way we gotta, because the committee, yeah. I just didn't want to throw it in your way. Councillors will come to order. All rise with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in order of veterans, servicemen and women who gave, who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Clerk, we'll call the roll. Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linahan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seika. Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Under the provision, excuse me, under the provision of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that this will be audio and video recording of this meeting by UMA, Urban Media Arts. First order of business.
First order of business is public comment.
Do you have any public comment?
Do I have four emails?
Okay, four emails. Please read the emails. I, I don't. Clerk, Lucy, one second.
Let me sign. Did anyone sign that sheet?
Does anybody know how to change this? This is gonna be a problem. All right, I just want to let the council be aware that the same challenge I had last week is this week. It wasn't changed. That I'm using the Board of Appeal mapping menu here. So if you, if I hit the wrong mic, just give me, your patience would be appreciated because everybody here is by the Board of Appeal, not by the council names. Do you want to change that, clerk?
I don't.
Okay.
Craig, can you just announce that this is a signup sheet? You may not know it.
For public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to let anybody in the audience know there is, there is a signup sheet for public comment, which is restricted to anything on the docket. I do not want to confuse the public comment with the Public Properties Hearing, two distinct different agendas and topics. So if you're here to speak on anything, well, you can speak on both, but if you, any reference to the, to the, anything on the docket tonight, you want to speak, there's a signup sheet. You still up there, councillor?
I have it now.
He has it. The clerk has it. We can do that, but the Public Properties will be a separate function. Does anybody want to sign up? Because we have the sheet up here. You want to sign up? Thank you.
Just, this, this first person, he wants 37, 39 Willard Street, so he probably should wait till the public hearing.
Yep.
So this is, this is that person. I'm gonna wind up and get the emails in my office.
Oh, you gotta go get the emails?
Yeah. I think I left these.
So is David here? David, you signed up for the public comment. Do you want to wait for the public hearing portion?
I forgot to.
Yeah. And then the youth council, I couldn't, I can't read you handwrite. What's your first name?
Ketchel.
Ketchel, if you want to come up, we can start, the clerk went upstairs to get some emails, but if you want to come up and speak on your topic on the youth council, more than happy to. Your mic should be, I don't know why your mic is not going on.
Uh, it's not on.
No, can you hit the button on that mic? I have it turned on here. Hold on, wait one second. Why is this not working? Can you hit it one more time? I have it on here. For some reason, it's still blinking. All right, let me try this one more time. Yeah, but I would rather just make sure we get in the record. Let me just take a look at this.
I have no idea. I'll find out.
Can you hear it?
Nope.
Oh, no. I thought I did it.
Test, 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 doesn't work, right?
No, it's not. Can we do anyone?
Sorry.
Can't do anyone.
Is Cochran still there? I'm just gonna send him.
We gotta fix this one. Be with me.
I have no idea. I think somebody plays with it.
Counselor McDonald, can you hit your button and just see if that works on yours?
Okay, so it is an issue with all the, if, take a seat. If you want to give us one minute, we gotta fix this because nobody seems to be able to work except, let me see councillor Condon, let's see if that works. It's not even blinking here.
Testing, testing, testing.
No, no, it's not working. I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess for the council. I'm gonna get some.
They're fixing it.
Counselor McDonald, can you hit your button and just see if that works on yours? Okay, so it is an issue with all the, if, take a seat. If you want to give us one minute, we gotta fix this because nobody seems to be able to work except, let me see councillor Condon, let's see if that works. It's not even blinking here.
Testing, testing, testing.
No, no, it's not working. I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess for the council.
I'm gonna fix it.
I'm gonna get some.
They're fixing it. They're fixing it.
I think it's not on.
It's, it's.
It's not on.
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 Following the start of the work.
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to refer the appointment to personnel appointments, all in favor? All opposed, motion is deferred. Next order of business. Oh. Oh, you did your light, I'm sorry. No, hold on. Counselor?
Are we work- are we working?
It's working, yep.
Uh, does the counsel have to approve this appointment? I thought it was the mayor's appointment. Right, but I, I just didn't know whether we're required to, do, so we have to approve the mayor's appointment?
You're right, okay. No, he's, he's right, he's right, should be placed on file. We don't have a say.
Just trying to help the agenda.
Please, your, your light's on. Now it's off, now it's on. Don't touch it again.
Sure.
You ready? Go ahead. Well, I don't know if you want to say anything.
I don't want to say anything.
Okay. It's Counsel McDonough, you're correct. Clerk, inform me.
Okay, thank you.
It's mayor's appointment, we don't have to send the personnel. More efficient, we, we have no say, even if we wanted to get rid of, not appoint this person, which we don't, it's just a matter of we don't have a say. So I will change that to place on, not, I'm changing the floor. So on Counsel Seika, Counsel Seika, Counsel Semenelli's motion to place on file, all in favor? All opposed, item is placed on file. Next order of business. Clerk, let me just put your mic on, there you go. Yeah, yeah. On Counsel motion, Counsel Winslow's motion to receive the committee per, uh, committee report, all in favor?
You gotta take it out of, take it out of order first. Take it out of order.
Okay, we'll take it out of order, okay, sorry. So on Counsel Winslow's motion to take the pla, uh, take it out of order? Get the committee report, all in favor? All opposed? On motion, on Counsel Winslow's motion now to receive the committee report, all in favor? And now Counsel Winslow, Counsel Winslow for the committee report. Counsel Winslow, let me just turn your mic on, there you go.
So, um, yeah, this is paper, um, warrant four, forty-five, twenty-two. Um, it relates to the, um, or, uh, compliance with the court order by Justice Camille Saraf. That was issued February seventh, twenty-twenty-two. As you know, the counsel referred, um, that to the proper, Properties Committee to discuss, um, how to proceed. And the Public Properties Cam, Committee came back with the following report. In compliance with the court order of Justice Camille Saraf of February seventh, twenty-twenty-two, this order of the city council would be referred to the Public Property Committee for review, five G tenant, um, associated as amended. And, um, we talked about, uh, we were going to receive and discuss an opinion from the city solicitor's, solicitor's office, setting forth whether Verizon's application for a small cell tower on pole located near thirty-seven, thirty-nine Willard Street substantially meets the technical requirements of this small cell ordinance. Um, we did receive that report in Public Properties. I mean, basically, that, uh, focused on, uh, you know, looking at our own ordinance and, um, that was the, um, you know, that the legal office does not make technical reviews, so they make legal reviews, so they basically pointed us to our ordinance as to what we're gonna, uh, go, go with, so we have that report on file. Um, and then the next thing, um, the recommendation is that we, um, we do have this hearing tonight and that we, we received public con, comment on whether the application substantially meets the technical requirements of the city's small cell ordinance, or whether otherwise not lawfully issued. Um, and then we would do, um, we would also, um, pursue having a peer reviewer, um, with the expertise in preparing radiation reports to FCC to, um, review the comments tonight and, um, any further information that Verizon submits. And that ultimately we'll have to determine, um, whether the application does not substantially meet the technical requirements of the city's small cell ordinance and therefore is issued in error, or whether, um, it, uh, the cities, uh, the report meets the technical requirements and, uh, was therefore issued correctly. And we did, one of the things we did in discussing, um, in the, uh, Public Properties Committee meeting, uh, we did, um, ask for all the records that related to particularly the notice to the public. And we did specifically realize through that, that, um, there was an inadvertent, um, way that we issue, prepare the notices that, um, typically when the, we asked the, um, board, I guess, the, uh, Board of Appeals, uh, or the Assessor's Office to prepare those reports, we give them an address and they notify everybody around them. Um, they give us that and it did not include the actual address that was used in this instance. So, um, so the director butter at thirty-seven, thirty-nine Willard Street, uh, Joseph Downhauer and his wife Claudia, did not receive the notice that would, uh, and this, the butters, uh, every other neighbor did. So, um, that, uh, made very clear that, uh, we would be justified in holding this hearing to make sure that that was done. So, uh, so that was the other thing. So, um, so that's the report that, you know, we have this hearing, that we, um, we gather more information on, um, uh, about, uh, this particular cell tower, both from the public as well as, um, hiring a peer reviewer. I have reached out over the past two weeks and we do have a peer reviewer, the EBI Consulting, that does this type of work. And they have, um, reviewed, uh, the application and I have further comments, but I think we should go into the public comment period of, uh, and, and let the public comment, so thank you.
Agreed. Okay, anybody questions on the committee? Public hearing committee? This is a joint meeting, but I wanted to just ask them first. Okay, no questions? Anybody off committee? Okay, no questions for Counsel Winslow? Well, I was gonna open the hearing now, I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions before we went into the hearing. Oh, sorry, Counsel O'Malley.
I was just wondering, do we need to place the committee report on file or table it for the hearing, or no?
Well, it was technically a joint meeting, right, before? Wasn't it, they advertised a joint meeting, Public Properties and the full council? It wasn't? Okay, yeah, we can place on file.
So I moved to place on file.
Okay, Counselor? O'Malley's motion to, to place the committee report on file, oh, Counsel Seika.
Thank you, Counsel President. Before we place this on file, are we not gonna have this public here, uh, this is just...
That was just the committee report.
Yeah, we're still doing the committee hearing.
Aren't they both one in the same, basically?
No. Clerk.
The way, the way, the, the way that it was taken out of order just to make sense of this whole night, uh, kind of. So you had to, normally in the, the, uh, the way the agenda goes, you know, the, uh, committee reports are down the end of the agenda, but we were having this hearing up here, so in order to make sense of the, uh, hearing, you had to take up the, moved it, took it out of order, so at least it made sense when it came out of the committee.
Okay, so one more quick question, Counsel Winslow, the peer reviewer, the, um, do you have what they suggested already or you've just reached out?
I do have, um, they did do.
Counsel Winslow, let me just put your mic on so we can hear you, I apologize, Counsel Winslow.
I do have, um, you know, I, I sent them the application and they also, Zaher also sent them the additional April information that Verizon sent. And they have some comments of additional information, they don't have specific recommendations, so, so we can talk about that afterwards, but I can explain what they're, they've said is information that they need to, you know, do their peer review, so.
So we're gonna hear those comments this evening?
Yes, I have those comments, I will read those.
He said he's gonna hold them after the podcast.
Oh, okay, I, um, I apologize.
No, no worries.
It's not really loud in here tonight for some reason.
Okay. So on Counsel O'Malley's motion to place on file, seconded by Counselor Winslow, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, committee report is placed on file. Next order of business is gonna be the public hearing for Selco Partnership DBA Verizon. We've heard the committee report, uh, from Public Properties. I declare the public hearing open. Any, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Let me turn your mic on, your mic is on, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, John Weaver, uh, Three Hundred Trade Center, Wilburn, Mass. I'm outside municipal counsel for Verizon Wireless. Uh, it is nice to be in a room where I know exactly how popular I am with, uh, most of the people in here. Uh, everybody knows, as the committee report made clear, this is the subject of litigation. Uh, while speaking about the, uh, the merits of the application itself and speaking in favor of it, I'll also speak a little bit to the background of that to begin my remarks. First, I don't think this will come as a surprise to anybody on the council. Verizon does object to this hearing, uh, as contrary to the court order that Counsel Winslow referred to. That order specifically referred to the electrical permitting and installation process when ordering the city, uh, to continue with its custom and practice-like approvals sought by Verizon Wireless. Per that order, the city council is limited to considering and ordering the issuance of the electrical permit Verizon applied for four months ago. Further, there's no need for hearing here as Verizon still has a grant of location issued by the city last year. Uh, the city did not rescind that authorization in its December order, uh, rather merely voted to remove Verizon's equipment from the Willard Street pole. Second, uh, at the Public Property Committee meeting two weeks ago, appeared there was some confusion generally about some of the facts between November and December of two thousand twenty-one that led to that December order. Uh, I submitted a letter today that recounted that, would like to speak to that now, just to get that into the record of that form as well. On November twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, former Counselor Camille asked Building Commissioner Miller whether or not an electrical permit had been issued for this particular small cell. On November twenty-ninth, Verizon applied for an electrical permit in a bundle with nine other, um, applications for electrical permits for other small cells, some of which, like this installation, had already been installed. Uh, that is, that is consistent with Verizon and the city's practice with regard to this. The grant of location that the city council issued last spring permits the installation. Once the installation proceeds beyond that to connect to the power source, actual electrical work, that's when Verizon and other carriers that apply, uh, to the city seek an electrical permit. Uh, so that the work that had been done up to that point did not require an electrical permit once they got to that point. For, uh, this particular, uh, small cell as well as the, the others in that bundle, Verizon sought an electrical permit and applied for that. Uh, early December, uh, the other nine permits were issued, including the permits where, uh, the small cell had already been installed. Uh, on December ninth, uh, a Verizon contractor that was working with the, uh, Inspection Services, uh, Department here, uh, contacted a staff member to ask about the delay in the issuance of that electrical permit. Uh, the staff reported that there's a holdup with the, quote, Board of Selectmen, fairly certain he meant the, the city council. The, and, and this gets into some of the comments that were made at the Public Property Committee meeting two weeks ago. Uh, during that meeting, Counsel O'Malley asked Commissioner Miller why Inspection Services had not issued an electrical permit at that time for this particular small cell. And Counselor, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Miller responded, "We didn't issue the permit because we knew it was going back to the city council." Uh, Mr. Miller didn't explain how he knew at that meeting that this would be going back to the city council. Counsel Spatafor signed a, an affidavit as part of the court filings, uh, that the city has made in which he stated that, um, he told, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, not to issue the electrical permit. Then that led to the December twenty-first meeting here, uh, where the order to remove, uh, Verizon's equipment was voted on by the council. Uh, with regard to the issue of notice that Counsel Winslow mentioned, uh, concerning this particular application, uh, I, I can't speak with any firsthand knowledge about the, uh, the practices and the information that, uh, he and, and Mr. Lucy discovered regarding notices that were sent out. Verizon has applied for, submitted a, um, public records request, um, until we receive the results of that. I just, I can't speak knowingly to that. Uh, however, based on the records of the city, I, I do know that, um, the butters, the closest butters did receive some sort of notice or were notified of this hearing. Um, at the December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one meeting, uh, of the city council, Mr. Downhauer said, uh, when we were notified back in March, we said something. Uh, this is similar to the minutes of the March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one Public Property Committee meeting, when Counsel Camille noted, uh, excuse me, from the minutes, Counsel Camille voiced his opposition on thirty-seven dash thirty-nine Willard Street. He received an email from a constituent where the pole is directly outside a home with children and they're concerned with health issues. So, notice had been given, Massachusetts law is pretty clear that where notice has been given constructively, even if not officially, the, uh, the person who received that is obligated to exercise their, their objection rights at that time. They can't wait however long time, in this case, nine months, to, to say something after, uh, a, after that, that notice had gone out after, that the rights expired. Um, so having said that, um, I'll speak briefly to the merits of the, the application. This is similar to the seventy-plus that have been applied for and approved, um, by the city council. Uh, it satisfies the substantive criteria, it satisfies the application criteria. Uh, I, I'm confident that this complies with all the legal requirements, uh, at the state, the local, the federal level. Uh, I am happy to take specific questions any counselors might have about specific issues or, or general questions about the technology. I, I, some of the, the members that have been here longer have been seeing these for a while. Counsel Murphy has certainly, um, been vocal in her opinion about them. Um, some of the newer members might have some questions generally since they're not as familiar with the technology and I'm happy to speak to that upon request. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll repeat myself, does, uh, anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. If anybody here is in favor of this petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing none and hearing none, I declare that portion of the meeting closed. Anyone's wishing to speak in opposition of this petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. See a couple hands, so we'll just, um, you got, you got the mic? No, I'll hit it.
Okay.
And then just state your name and address for the record.
I will. I'm Vincent Maralia. I live at Forty Willard Street, which is across from this pole. I also, just to let you know, I've worked at Tufts University for thirty-eight years as engineering coordinator in the School of Engineering, Department of Mechanical Engineering. And I teach, I was teaching and I also did research, okay? I also consulted for A, uh, A X Z Y Inc., engineering consultant firm on liability cases. So I am familiar with some of this process, okay? So I want to start off by telling you that I look for a win-win situation here. I'm surprised Verizon just doesn't move the pole, but that's, that's neither here or there. Okay, I, I think, I gotta give you a history of this pole, because I think it's very important that you know this, okay? Some of you who were on the, on the, on the council back, back when, when this pole was installed, okay? It was stalled by a favor to Councilman Flynn. And I'm sure, I'm sure he will do it through a deposition, uh, what I'm saying now, okay? It wasn't legally done. It was supposed to be on, on Pagram Street. And the reason why this pole was installed was a light pole to be put on Pagram Street because the neighbor who's no longer living there was complaining that the kids from a, a house on Willard Street were going by his house, because his house is right on the corner of the street, smoking cigarettes at night and ga, gathering outside his window, okay? So Counsel Flynn, being a nice counsel, counselor, he asked for, asked the National Grid to put up a light pole. So he put up a light and a light pole. I objected because the light pole was shining in my bedroom, because it's right at my bedroom thing. Counsel Flynn, who, this, as we all know, some people, uh, can be very tough. He said, "Do me a favor, just let it go, we'll put a shield on it if we have to, whatever." So that pole was never, ever intended to be a, uh, a utility pole. In fact, that pole is the only pole on that street, on that side of the street, okay? So keep that in mind when I, when I say this, okay? The other thing is, that pole number is two-four-five-two. Guess what? The pole across the street is two-five-four, uh, two-four, two-four-five-two. Same pole number, different pole. Okay, you can see, I, I, I give you any of this stuff here that you.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have like a rusty like Judge Wapman to come down and take it from you.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll get it after, Vin.
I'll get it afterwards, okay? The other thing is, uh, geez, I haven't, you know, it's been five years since I've been retired and speaking in front of people.
Well, you're not getting paid for this one, so keep it, go keep it going.
Okay, so I gave you the history of the pole, okay, two poles the same name, okay? Pole has, okay, so here's the thing, I actually did my research on, on, uh, on, uh, the F S, FCC ruling and, and the, and also the court rulings on the FCC. Well, you know, I know you can't judge on safety because the FCC says that we don't want to hear about safety, okay? But there's a, there's an issue here, okay? I looked all over for, for, for numbers, you know? Unfortunately, this is a technical thing, it'd be nice to be able to question somebody who's technical from, from the, from the thing. Is, but the thing is, I didn't have to look too far for it. Because alls I had to do was go look at the pole. On the pole, if, may I approach and give you guys?
Yeah, yeah, this is not a court. You can approach. I'll pass it around.
You can share, yeah, my taxes are due, so I can only.
A couple?
So, so on the pole itself, Verizon has actually told me that it wasn't safe beyond a certain point, okay? If you look here, you know, on that sign, you can read it, it's, it, you know, radio frequencies may cause, you know, type, take a look at that. So the question comes in, if that's the case, if you, if, if you, uh, uh, let's see, I'll do this here. So what happens here is if you look at the pole.
Thank you, Counsel. Vinny, could you just get behind the mic because we can't hear you when you come forward.
Okay, so, I'm used to walking in the class.
No, I, yeah, yeah.
So, so, uh, if you, this is a picture of the pole presently, as it stands. And I have more to give you later on, uh, pictures. If you'll notice on this pole, that, that sign is on the pole, right down, right down over, I'll show it to you later. It's right on this point here, which if you look at this pole and you look at how close it is to the house, the house is within that distance. So Verizon is actually saying that that house can be exposed to this, to this, this, uh, uh, you know, wave, uh, you know, kind of beam, okay? The other thing is, what, what on your documentation that you, that you received, it doesn't show you any pattern, you know, a wave pattern. It doesn't even show you which one, which antenna is a, you know, is a transmitter and a receiver. There's three trans, there's three, uh, units up there and we don't know which one is the transmitter, which one is the receiver. And this is why, you know, I've, well, if we ever end up in court, this is where we would be questioning the techn, technical side of, of this thing here. To show you that I have, I did do my, my homework, okay? This is from the FCC and it says, "Human exposure to radio frequency fields guides and solar things." So, so there is, there's, I did do my homework, okay, when I say this. Here's one, "Small cell and health," this is, this is all documentation that's, that's out there. This is going on throughout the country. People are, are charged, even, even Congress, some of the congressmen have also questioned it. This is, this is, this is close enough and by Verizon's own admittance, that they, it's dangerous, okay? So that's, uh, court orders, by the way, court orders FCC to revisit its safety guidelines on RF, everything. So it's not, this isn't something we're making up, this is legitimate. I understand, if you look at why the FCC was given this power, it's because they want to, they want to push this technology out. It has some good stuff, it really does, but not at the risk of a child's life. Not this risk of this child, that, that, most, most of the time, it can be moved. Now, another thing that bothers me about Verizon, okay? Verizon did put an electrical permit, okay? This is their, this is their, their drawing from their, it, it's not a stamp drawing, you know, by a, by a registered engineer, you know, a, a engineer, it's not a stamp, it's just somebody made this, made this out. I'm assuming the company is good, but it doesn't give me any, you know, guarantee that this is, this is stamped by a registered engineer.
We, we don't know what you're looking at, Vinny, so.
Huh?
We don't, we don't know.
You don't have this? I thought you were giving these councilmen one of these. The plan.
It was with the original application. Oh, that's with the original application?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got that? Okay, I, I, I'll, I'll share it to you.
Okay, just.
All right, down here by the engineer, it says, "Existing ground rod, ground rod." If you notice this, this ground rod is under the sidewalk, is under the sidewalk. I, I'll show you, I'll send this back. The way they installed it is above the sidewalk and it's sticking out. It's a trip hazard, not only is it a trip hazard, but that's, that's where the dogs, it got killed in Boston because there was electrical fault and the dogs, the dogs went to it and they got electrocuted. So even, even with their drawings.
Can you give us both that so we can reference this and then we're gonna have to back it up with the application? So we can, we can pass this around so we understand what you're talking about, okay?
So, so even, so even, even with those documents, I'm not sure I trust Verizon's capability to doing things the proper what they presented.
Oh, okay.
That's just my opinion, okay? Let's see here. Okay, so now. Let's see, sign close to the house, okay? "System ground not installed properly." Okay, now FCC rules. Now, I've checked on the FCC rules, like I said, I've, I've done a, I've done a lot of work FCC, you know, I'm a researcher, you know? I'll give you this one now.
I'll help you, we'll go, we'll split them in half, Vinny. Go ahead, we'll take care of this. Oh, that's your paper, okay.
Okay, so now, if you look at this, now the FCC says, and this was, this was held up in court, I have paperwork here that, that, that says it, okay? It was held up in the court, uh, court, okay? You cannot, you cannot deny this because of safety. They don't care about kids' safety, they just care about, about whatever, okay? I'll be nice, okay? Because I totally be nice. But if you look at this picture, you will see that this is the only pole on that street, on that side. It sticks out, this is a residential area. The FCC in the court allow you to, the, the local council to reject this, and you can, you can have somebody prove this out, for, for aesthetics. That's the one thing that you can, you can reject as far as aesthetics. And I think this meets that requirement, aesthetics. And I have it, I have it here. You can see that you, if you look at that pole, look at the street, that's the only thing. Now, if you reject it for aesthetics and you offer them another pole across the street, whether they like it or not, they can make it, they can make it work, they get the technology to make it work. They can go, the, the courts will uphold any objection that you might have. And, and, and based on the safety of the kids and so forth, uh, you could see infrastructure fight, small cell orders updated, and what I'm telling you is the truth, okay? And, and, and I would hope that you, and let the, if it needs to go to court, we'll go to court. But I think Verizon, Verizon, I hate to, let, I hate to think that Verizon will, would lose, you know, would, would want to take a chance of losing.
So, so I want, I want to ask you directly, are you speaking in favor or against it? Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm, I'm against.
I know you're used to giving, uh, you know, your classes, I want to make sure that we got it proper on the record. You're speaking, you're speaking against it.
And you can keep that stuff there, okay? All right?
It's not coming off your tax bill, thank you for the color copies. Okay, again, anybody speaking in opposition against this petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Claudia Vissini, I'm the owner of thirty-seven, thirty-nine Willard Street, um, with my husband Joe Downhauer. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here today. As a mother of my beautiful five-year-old daughter, Laviana, it is obvious that I'm very emotional about removing this 5G antenna. So I'd kindly ask the council to vote once again to remove it for human reasons, amongst other reasons that we will talk about today. Even though there is some research on how 5G is not harmful, which I believe the Verizon lawyer has alluded to, there is also countless research on how 5G is extremely harmful. One thing is for sure, 5G has just started and no one truly knows for certain the long-term harmful effects of it. Only in ten, twenty, or thirty years will we truly know or realize the dire effects of it. Do you remember when there were claims about how healthy cigarettes and sugar were? And when it first came out and how it was marketed? When there was not enough research to prove its impacts to health? But today, it's clear as day that it impacts health and it has led to countless numbers of deaths, hundreds and thousands of people dying from lung cancer. of deaths, hundreds and thousands of people dying from lung cancer. I believe the same concept applies here. Masks were not helpful in the beginning, and now they're a part of life. You get the picture. We as citizens often need to use our own common sense, critical thinking abilities, and natural instincts to make decisions that are best for our family. We just can't rely on governments or scientists, who often are being funded by the said companies for the said research, or other constituents to make the decisions for us. And as a mother, I know that raising my child in front of this 5G antenna is a bad idea. So please help me in removing it. I ask you, would you want to live with this 5G antenna this close to your own child? I could flood your inbox with the research that I've recently done, that was written to explain that a five-year-old's brain, healthy or otherwise, is encased in a thinner skull and contains more fluid than that of an adult brain. According to studies carried out by industry modelers in Switzerland and France, the bone marrow of a child's head absorbs 10 times more radiation, 10 times more, than that of an adult's, while that of an infant and toddlers will absorb even more. That tower is right by my daughter's head, who is five years old, and her brain will absorb it more than all of us. What does Verizon have to lose if they move that antenna? What do I have to lose? The cost of Verizon taking that antenna and moving it to a place out of harm's way will be negligible. The cost of cancer therapies, should my daughter get a brain tumor, will be life-changing. And on top of it, we will suffer to see our only daughter die right in front of our eyes. I grew up in Namibia, which a lot of you probably don't know, is in the west of South Africa, where many children were exposed to radiation in uranium mines where their fathers would work. Everyone overlooked the dangers of that situation in a similar fashion. And there were children born deformed, and a number of those children developed cancer later on in their lives. If you overlook this now, you are making the same mistakes again. The poll is in front of my house, is only, it is the only poll on the outside of the street, and there is no reason for it to be there, firstly. Secondly, our neighbors and I originally objected to the placement of the antenna because it is in front of our house, right by our daughter's bed. We never once got official notice that it was going to be put back in the poll, as stated by the lawyer, because there was a glitch in the town's electronic mailing system. And additionally, the original Verizon plans did not even select this poll, and then somehow, miraculously, it went up on that poll because there was nothing but a light on it. We realized that 5G is coming, so we're not being unrealistic here, we know it's gonna happen. It must be in the neighborhood, but there are many safer poles nearby to put that antenna that shows some degree of human decency. There is a cemetery, a gas station, roads bordering wooded areas, et cetera, I could go on and on. You can put any cancer-reducing element, and it will not cause as much harm to a human sleeping at night, let alone a small child. The location of the current antenna is well within the margin of error, as was shown by Vinnie, and this risk could be mitigated drastically by picking another less intrusive poll. And it will not affect Verizon in the slightest if they have to have it moved. Again, the cost for them is negligible versus the risk to my, my daughter's life. The potential of one person's life should never be overlooked. And as a mother, it is my duty to give my daughter the best chance at life and success, and not gamble her life in front of a 5G antenna that many scientists around the world have said is dangerous. Would you be able to sleep at night with a 5G antenna five feet from your property line, eliminating radio frequency electromagnetic energy into your property, your body, your daughter's body, your head and your family? I know you made an unanimous decision last time to remove this poll, and I ask you again to please make the right choice for both my family, but, and also the people of Malden, and make the right human choice. Set the precedence now that 5G antennas should not be this close to small children when it's harmful to people. Be the leaders we look to you to be in situations like this. Thanks for your time.
Hi, Joseph Downhour, 3739 Willard Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again here. I truly appreciate the, the last time the council voted on this issue, and voted unanimously to remove the antenna. I ask the council once again to please vote to remove this antenna. On at least two occasions, homeowners had voiced their concerns to some of the members of the council regarding these antennas, and they were subsequently moved. For example, on one of those occasions from the meeting minutes on September 2nd, Council Lewinso, Councilor Spatafor, and Councilor Linehan voted to remove the antenna at 71 Plainfield Ave, because it was too close to a small tree. And I quote from the meeting minutes, Council Lewinso stated, "It is fear the city to ask them to look at another location, because trees grow, and they're important to the environment and the community, and we need to protect them." On another occasion, an antenna was moved because a friend of one of the councils was recovering from cancer, and the resident requested the antenna be moved out of fears of additional cancer, and the antenna was approved to be moved. So clearly, there is precedence to the council voting to move these antennas for a variety of reasons. In the second case, there was no demand for case studies or any peer reviews to take place regarding radiation. Therefore, why are these peer review studies on radiation now being requested with regard to the antenna in front of my house, when they were never requested before with regard to other residents who were worried about radiation? All I'm asking for here today is the same level of respect, consideration that was given to other homeowners who asked for the antennas to be moved out in front of their homes. Verizon filing injunction after an original unanimous vote shows you the frustration and the pressure that's building in the state and the country against 5G. Today, we're not asking to stop 5G completely, as we know it's coming fast, but we are asking with regard to this one antenna to have a better approach and a more thoughtful and methodical approach to the placement of the antenna. We're only asking them to move this one antenna. We are looking for a win-win situation here, the antenna can still be in the neighborhood nearby, just not this insanely close to my house. It is completely fair, reasonable, and it's a humane request. What does Verizon have to lose by quietly moving it to another nearby pole? Absolutely nothing. What do I have to lose? My beautiful little girl sitting right back there. Her, just like all children in this community, who are more important than trees, by the way, because they will grow, and they are important to the environment and the community, and we need to protect them. Not one person in this entire room would choose to live this close to this antenna. The risks are just too high, given the significant amount of conflicting research. Not one person in this room, given a choice, would put their own child next to this antenna, continuously, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Not one person wants their property rights violated by living near an antenna five feet from their property line spewing high electromagnetic frequencies constantly at their bodies. And if you say you do, problem solved, I guess, we can put the antenna in front of your home. To the Verizon lawyer who's sitting in the back, seems to be a little confused about the notice that was received. I never once received official notice. The only reason I knew the first time it was going up is because my neighbor informed me. That was the only time I was informed. After that, we, we were told it was taken off. And then the next, next thing I knew, it was being put back up. That, that was the first time I saw it, was it when it was being put back on the pole. And I immediately asked the guy, "What are you doing?" And right then, I knew they were putting it up. And we, again, not one time was I officially noticed, until this meeting, this was the first time I got the official notice. And in addition, today here, today, we got people from 33 Willard, 41 Willard, 40 Willard, 36 Willard, and 46 Will in the back, the neighbors that are here. And those are just the neighbors I told, every one of them showed up that I asked. I could have asked the whole street, they all would have been here. And the way Verizon's getting away with this is they're putting, you know, you're putting one notice in the mail, well, guess what? People don't check the mail that much, they're busy with their lives, supporting their kids, going to work. You know, a kid comes home, she's 15, she takes the mail, she throws it away, and then no one sees it. I guarantee you, if I went to all the other 40 places around town that you guys didn't send the notices to, I bet every single one of them would have been here too. But I feel like that's not necessary, because I feel like this is a pretty easy vote here. To those of you siding with Verizon, I say, don't be afraid to go to court. Win or lose here today, we couldn't have been caught either way. So the only thing you have to be afraid of is being on the wrong side of history and human decency. The sign on the post, which is 14 feet below the antenna, says, "Transmitting antenna radio frequency fails beyond this point may exceed the FCC occupational exposure limit." That distance is the same distance as the poll to the front of my house, my deck where I hang out. Verizon is spelling it out right on the poll itself that the poll is too close and within the margin of error. In summary, you've been given plenty of reasons here to say no to this antenna, including, the poll is the only poll on the outside of the street, and aesthetically terrible to look at, as it does not fit in. The poll has the same number as another poll, showing the complete disorganization that the poll shouldn't have been able to begin with. Verizon didn't install the ground wall, ground wire properly, we were never notified because of the glitch in the system. Verizon's own sign tells you the poll is too close to my house. The precedent has already been set that on two other occasions where these antennas were removed by the council. I truly hope your resolve and your commitment to the residents of Malden shines through in your vote today. And even if Verizon eventually pushes back again in court at a later date, at least you know you have done the right thing here today and can have a clear conscience, knowing that a small battle win today for the residents of Malden eventually will help clear the path towards inspiring others to push for change in helping to make each one of us feel more safe and more comfortable in our homes, not less safe. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Do I need to say that again, everybody? Everybody knows. Come, come forward if you're, if you're gonna speak in opposition against the petition, and just state your name and address to the record, please, thank you.
Thank you, my name is David Coughlin.
David, can you just pull the mic a little closer? I don't know if anybody else can hear him, anybody else hear him? Go ahead, Dave.
Is this better?
Yeah, it's much better, thank you.
Sorry. My name is David Coughlin, I'm here representing my parents who live on Gilbert Street. They're much older than me, obviously, and they have their own health issues. My father wears a pacemaker, and I did not do the same research that this gentleman did right here, but he did a great job.
Don't bring him up, please.
Okay. I think the other people here have spoken more eloquently than I can on this issue. I do have concerns regarding my parents' health, as I said, and I know their neighbors across the street who actually live slightly closer to my parents towards 3739 Willard Street, have also their own health issues that could be affected by the 5G. I know that the gentleman from Verizon has quoted reports that it is not a health issue. I agree with the other people from the neighborhood that it is too early to see how accurate those reports are right now. In addition, it'd be nice to know what their site survey and radio frequency surveys of the area are that require that the actual antenna be placed in this spot. You know, is it needed? Are they looking for overlapping coverage? What is the deficiency that requires the antenna be placed in this location? I just wanted to voice my concerns on that and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak in opposition against the petition, please come forward, state your name and address to the record? Thank you.
My name is Marie Shea, 36 Willard Street. I didn't plan on saying anything when I got here, but I just want to say I am opposed to this, and I'd like to have it removed. I live across the street, right at 36 Willard Street, and as they mentioned, 5G is new, and we don't know what it will do in the future, and, you know, as they mentioned, they do have a small child, and the, the tower is really high, and it's right there, right in front of the house. That does, is the only light post in that, on that street. It was, I've been, lived on that street for 30 years, and it is, as Vinnie mentioned, they did put that one post in there, it is an eyesore, but that is not the, this, the reason why I'm speaking to this. It's, you know, it's, they, there are so many places that they could be put in this, you know, tower, that isn't in a residential area, you know, and I think they could be thinking about that. I do, you know, I look outside my window, and that is right there, and that's what I'm seeing. You know, I think they should be thinking about where they're putting these things, and so, and thinking about the neighbors, and what, what it's gonna be doing. They could be putting it on Eastern Ave, where no one is, you know, there's businesses that it's not gonna be affecting people sleeping at night, you know, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody here who would like to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name and address to the record? Does anybody here who would like to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name and address to the record? Does anybody here who wants to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name and address to the record? For those who can't figure it out, I asked three times. And now I will deem that portion of the meeting closed, so the public hearing is closed, so no more testimony from the public. We may call upon any counselors or city officials that might want to speak, but no more public testimony, so just to let the rest of the public know that that is, that portion of the meeting is closed. So Council Lewinso, he has his light on. Council Lewinso.
I mean, I, I actually would like to keep the public hearing open...
Okay.
...in terms of just my own suggestions on how we proceed. I have, as I mentioned, one of the recommendations of the Public Properties Committee was to reach out, have a peer reviewer, I mean, we've heard, you know, some technical information, and we, we've heard from the residents as well, and I think none of us being expertise, having expertise in this field, I think it's important to, to understand that. And, you know, one of the things I just say professionally, you know, I've been an environmental attorney, I've faced off against the likes of General Electric and other Fortune 500 companies, you don't do this lightly. You want to make sure you have technical expertise, if that, and have a very strong basis to make your decisions on. I know this is a particularly close antenna, and we really want to make sure that, that Mr. Downhauser can sit on his desk safely and that type of thing. That may not be something that we looked at when we considered this in the past, and I think, you know, the, the comment about the aesthetics, that's something I think we should ask our legal counsel to look at before we make, make a decision, but, so my recommendation would be actually that we would keep the hearing open, that we would ask Verizon to provide our...
So do you want to make that vote, you want to ask that vote for us, Steve?
Yeah, I, I can, yeah, I'd make that vote to keep the hearing open.
Okay, so any objections to keeping the hearing open?
For the moment, yeah.
Okay, hearing not?
Can I?
I think we can vote to bring it back, and I don't think there's, I don't think we can, I think we can close it, I think we can open it.
I just, I just want to make sure that whatever action we take...
It's right, we didn't table it, you're right, I don't think we can.
Yeah, so.
But we closed a portion of the public hearing.
But I, I just want to make sure that if we have comments come in from our peer reviewer that, that we can share that with, you know, the, the people who are here tonight, and they have an opportunity to comment, and we can make sure that, so.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's what I'm asking, that we...
Yeah, so you're asking to table the entire public hearing so we can resume it again and, and bring in public comment, not the, not the public, okay.
Right, so we can, we can hear from a peer reviewer, and that the, the, you know, public can comment on that, and then we can make a decision based on that. And I think we, we do have, it sounds like there's maybe a legal issue related to aesthetics and confirming that we as a council can make a decision based on that, because like I say, making sure that we have a sound technical or legal basis to make our decision is, I think, something that, that we actually owe folks in this audience to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. We've tried this a few times, I would, you know, that, I would encourage that we make sure that we've, we've done that due diligence, so. So that, I, I could say, that's my motion would be to basically keep the hearing open and table this matter until that we've had the opportunity to hear from a peer reviewer, share that information with the public so they can comment as well, so that's, that's...
So for the audience, I misunderstood, so Council Lewinso's asking to table this meeting, so what would happen is we'd, we'd take a vote to table, that means we would not close this out, and then one time we gathered information, we would have the hearing again... would have the hearing again in this chamber and we could take additional testimony because the portion of the meeting would reopen and introduce to do. So we wouldn't have a conclusion tonight, but we would table that and move forward. So I'll entertain a motion, but I do have a blinking light, so Counsel Seika is aggressively pointing to our light. Counsel Seika, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So we're not, you don't want to have any more discussion this evening?
I mean, it's up to the other fellow councils, but my suggestion is, I mean, you've heard a lot of information. I don't know if you're dealing with that, but I'm asking you to make that decision. We know we're already in litigation already. Like I say, to me, no additional litigation, you should make sure that we get the best legal, technical advice on doing it. That's my argument. I want you to make a vote of the case.
Okay, so...
I can deliberate after that.
Counseless Batafor, I am not in favor of tabling this public hearing this evening. I've heard enough. I think that Jonathan said it best, we're going to get sued whether we vote for this or we vote against it tonight, so I'm going with the side of humanity. So I, as a mother myself of two children, I would not want something that could possibly harm either one of them within feet of their bedroom window with not knowing enough. So it's fine. I have the floor, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Winslow.
I want you to table.
Counseless Batafor. Decorum? I still have the floor.
Counsel Winslow, I recognized her. She's just saying she's not going to vote for it, that's fine.
I haven't even, I...
I don't care what the peer reviewer actually says.
I haven't even introduced it without a question.
Counseless Batafor, please, I still have the floor.
You have the floor.
And I would like to call Zaher, our Assistant City Solicitor, up because I have a few questions for him.
I say, under Roger's rules, a motion to table takes the president's...
All right, so Counsel, one second.
Because we always follow that, right?
All right, one second, Counsel Winslow, okay. So before Zaher comes up, Counselor Winslow, you have the floor.
I'm making a motion to table.
I'd like to know from the Assistant City Solicitor if we can even make a motion to table this. We already closed out this public hearing.
We can make the motion, so...
Okay, well, I would like to speak to the Assistant City Solicitor...
One second, Counsel Seika, one second, one second.
Before I vote on this.
So I haven't even...
So Counsel Winslow, you object to the Assistant City Solicitor coming up and just giving us that opinion?
I mean, I guess, I'm not sure, does a point of order take the president over a motion table? I guess that's the question, so.
Zaher?
I haven't even introduced it yet, so he knows, has had chances, I haven't even spoken to it yet, so.
Good evening.
Good evening, President, Council members. I just want to remind the council and give the council an update on the status of the litigation.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, could you speak a little closer? I think it's...
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on. I think it's the way the mic's angled, so go ahead, thank you.
I just want to give the council an update on the status of the litigation and the application that Verizon submitted for this particular antenna. And I want to remind the council that under the ordinance, it does have the authority to order removal of equipment if it no longer complies with the city ordinance and city local laws. I have asked Verizon's attorneys a number of times, please provide a complete copy of your original antenna petition for this particular pole so that we can make sure that what you submitted or what you think you submitted matches up with what we have as an application, the materials we have. They have refused. I'm not sure exactly why. I have reviewed carefully all the application materials for this particular antenna that we have from, that I obtained from the city council or from the city clerk's office. There appear to be at least a couple of things from that application that are missing, that are required by our city ordinance. Section L of our city ordinance lists about 14 items or categories of items that an application for an antenna license is supposed to include. Among those items is an affidavit of a licensed radio frequency engineer certifying certain things. Another item is an affidavit of a certified radiation safety specialist or RF safety officer. Neither of those things could I locate as part of the application for this particular antenna that was originally submitted last year. So I just wanted the city council to be aware of that. I don't know why we don't have it and my only suspicion as now as to why Verizon's attorneys didn't provide me a copy with their application is because maybe the application may have been deficient to begin with. But those two items, which are clearly required as part of an antenna license application in our ordinance, are missing from the materials that I've reviewed.
So Zaher, I want to be, I want a couple of things. Counsel Seika still has the floor. I do want to ask to make sure that we get, because then Counsel Winslow's going to go to him, he has a motion pending, but I want to make sure, can you provide any information on, I'll ask after. Counsel Seika still has the floor. I'll ask after.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much. So I guess one of my questions is, if we have two poles with the same exact pole number, I've never actually sat on the Public Properties Committee before, so I haven't had to review any of these. Do they come in with a pole number? Because if so, which one did we approve? If there's two poles that say 2452, which pole actually, even though it says 37, 39 Willard Street, it still could be the one that's directly across the street. If they're both across the street from one another, it could technically be either of the two poles, so...
They do use, I can give you that information, they do use an address as a reference point, but considering the way this is a unique situation where the poles are directly across the street from each other, it could be...
It could kind of go both ways.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, it could be, but they usually give an address and that's why we...
Well, I appreciate that, but just food for thought, which pole did we actually approve if there's two with the same number? And I would like to know for the record, Counselor Winslow has a motion to table this public hearing, but we already closed out the public hearing portion of, already, with the, so, I guess I'm a little confused, what?
I thought somebody was sneezing.
Oh, sorry. So are we able to table the public hearing or, we technically already closed it, so can you go back and table something that's already been closed? Or do you table the paper and have discussion later?
So Zaher, let me just jump in. My, and I'll defer to, I misunderstood Counsel Winslow. I don't think we can table the public hearing portion because it was closed out. My opinion or what I heard was we're going to table, he would like to table the vote to get more information, come back, open the meeting up again and have that information given to the council. I don't think we can table, we'd have to restart, we have to do the whole meeting over again. We're just tabling, I believe, and I'll let Counsel Winslow speak, he's asking to table the vote. Counsel Winslow, why don't you speak? Because it's your...
Really fast, Counseless Batafor? Maybe we should have not voted on the committee report and tabled the committee report and not have done anything with this public hearing, because this paper is technically the public hearing paper number, not the committee report paper number, so...
Yeah, Counsel Winslow, you have the floor.
I just know, you know, there are instances, I mean, I've been to planning board and other type of situations where they will table a paper but still allow public comment after the hearing, so it's not unprecedented in what we do in other settings that it is allowable to keep a hearing open and that was, I've tried to, you know, make my point to table as we were saying, to just make sure that that was the understanding because the good people here want to be able to comment on if we get further information to consider. So, I mean, that's really what the spirit of this is, is to make sure that we get the information that we need and that we make a decision on a full application. And I think certainly, I say we've, the peer reviewer has looked at the application materials that I was able to put together and Zaher had another thing and identify a couple things that are missing. I think if there's a couple of things that Zaher has seen, those are the type of things we should ask for. It would be the type of thing we would table a petition and wait for that material before we make a final decision. If Verizon decides not to submit it, well, we don't make a vote, you know, that's up to them. So I think that's kind of the thought, that we make sure that we have complete information. I mean, how many of you have even received the applications yourself? So, I mean, we should, if we're making a decision on application, we should make sure that we as the counselors have read that, so. So that, like I say, I, that's my thought, is to make sure and table this and pending further information and that then we get that further information and make sure the community has the opportunity to come on that and that we make sure that we as counselors in making this decision in this matter have the full application. I mean, if we're making a decision on the application and it's this controversial, we should make sure that we have that information, so.
Okay, I have two lights on, Counsel Seminelli and Counsel O'Malley, so Counsel Winslow, you going to make your motion?
I'll make my motion.
Any further questions for me or can I sit down?
Yeah, so let's do, let's do the vote. He wants to do the vote, so no...
Okay, so I just, I want to officially make my motion.
He's going to do the vote.
So motion to keep the hearing on this matter open and to table the matter until such time that Verizon has provided the following information to the city's peer reviewer, construction zoning drawings for proposed installation specific for the subject address, RF safety data sheets for the proposed location, RF compliance reports for the proposed location specific for the subject address. So those are technical reports that I would not have been, being on the property, Public Property Committee, that I would not have understood or known to be asking for, so we didn't ask for those. The peer reviewer has requested those so that they can do that. I think the other thing is that we would ask the peer reviewer to, you know, complete the review of the Verizon application, the supplemental materials that the public has submitted today and so we can, when we reopen the hearing, we have that. And we will make sure that we notify residents in attendance of the availability of the peer review report and the date and time of the subsequent city council meeting to continue the hearing. I mean, I would also be open to whatever materials are, you know, a city solicitor has...
You have all this, Counsel Winslow? I just want to make sure, okay, you have everything.
Yes, I have it, yes.
I just want to make sure the clerk has it.
Basically, we table this pending further information.
Second on the motion?
So, yeah.
Second on the motion? Counsel Condon seconds the motion. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seika. Seminelli. Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Batafor? No. Six to four. Six to four, it's tabled. Now, so that means we will do this again, once we have the information, so Counsel Seminelli's light's on first. Counsel Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I guess this is for you. Correct me, I heard you correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong. You said that you're waiting on information, right? That you asked for Verizon for the initial application that you didn't receive?
I requested it and maybe we'll get it, but basically I've been told, we're not giving it to you, you have what you have, you know, look at that.
All right, so you know what? Listen, we've been on this thing now for like three weeks, a month?
Yeah, Chris, we tabled this, we can't ask.
You tabled it. All right. It's why I wanted to be heard before you tabled it.
I can't untable.
We can't. We are, we are... No, I, listen, listen, I get it, I get it.
All right, so if anybody wants to not discuss, everybody else, any? Yep, it's tabled. What's your question going to be, Counsel O'Malley? Because I want to be careful, we did table this, so.
I understand, so the question was whether or not we could table. We can, we can table a hearing.
We did.
So we tabled the hearing.
No.
We tabled everything.
We already placed the committee report on file.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. We tabled the hearing. So you had said that you were going to come up and give us a litigation update?
That was it. I gave it to you.
But, but...
Pretty much.
My understanding is it's now been appealed to the Superior Court?
It's always been in Superior Court.
It's always been there?
Yeah.
Okay. Has there been any additional action related to that?
There hasn't been any, there's been a motion filed by Verizon to, a motion to enforce the order by issuing the electrical permit, which the city has opposed, and there's been no decision on that yet. That's just, that's it.
Understood, thank you, that's all.
All right.
Okay, Counsel Crowe, you, nothing to talk about, right? Okay, next order of business. So this portion of the meeting is over for the people who came and speak against it. We'll do this again, we will properly notify you when it happens. Thank you. Next order of business.
Licensed Chair Seika has requested all these petition licenses be read at once because they'll all be getting referred. Paper 128-22 Petition Extended Hour Speedway, number 2504-214 Broadway, it's a renewal. Paper 129-22 Petition Livery License, Stephanie Lacona, 205 Bryant Street, one livery license, it's a renewal. Paper 130-22 Petition Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker, AM Design Jeweler, 664 Salem Street, secondhand dealer, it's a renewal. Paper 131-22 Petition Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker, GameStop, number 626344 Broadway, Suite A110, secondhand deal license, it's a renewal. Paper 132-22 Petition Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker, Ad Cal Jeweler and AC Loan, 56 Pleasant Street, pawn broker license and secondhand dealer, it's a renewal. Paper 133-22 Petition Amusing Machine, Latienda, 45 Levin Street, three machines, it's new. Paper 134-22 Petition Pool Room Billiard License, Ellen K. Billiard Pool Hall, 94B Pleasant Street, seven tables, it's a renewal. Paper 135-22 Petition Pool Room Billiard License, Loyal Order of Moose, Lodge 9810, 562 Broadway, two tables, it's a renewal. Paper 136-22 Petition Pool Room Billiard License, Club 24 Inc., 787 Salem Street, Malden, two tables, it's a renewal. And Paper 137-22 Petition Open Air Parking Lot, Malden Middlesex Motor Sales, DBA Spadafor Auto, 35 Canal Street, ten spaces, it's a renewal.
Referring to license?
One second, Counsel. Did you read this one? This is this one. Did you read that one? I don't know what that's there for. Did you read this one, though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just was checking with the clerk to make sure one of the licenses was referenced. They all were referenced, so on Counsel Seika's motion to refer the petition to license, all in favor, say aye, all opposed? Okay, all, items are referred to license. Next order of business.
Paper 138-22 resolved that the City of Malden City Council established a Malden Youth Council ad hoc committee with three city councils as voting members assigned by the council president to provide an opportunity for youth of Malden and foster civic engagement and an opportunity to be involved and participate in local government to acquire greater knowledge and appreciation for local government through active participation in the system.
Okay, Counsel, there are several sponsors, but I'll refer, I will have the lead sponsor, Counsel Colin Hayes, speak on the paper.
Yes, thank you. So I'm not sure there's anything more I could say than what the youth actually said themselves tonight, so that was amazing, but I did want to let people know that I've done a lot of work on this. You know, we've all seen our youth take the lead outside of school in the past few years with Malden Teen and Richmond Center, the YMCA, YWCA, GMAC, UMA, Malden Core, Malden's Promise and Zonta. I'm sure there's more. And when they're, you know, asked to partner up with adults, they shine. So over the years, I've ventured a lot of the youth and folks in the, in Malden, and this has come up a bunch of times. There are a lot of councils in different cities that I also reviewed as well, so I did submit a draft of what I think it could look like and what I think that we would do today. Also sent it to legal, talked to the superintendent, some school committee members, but I think tonight what we could do, and I'm not sure which committee it would go to, but maybe refer it to a committee to just, you know, to kind of flush out the details. And I would really hope, yeah, maybe it would be ordinance, but I would really hope that, like, other people sign on to sponsor this as well. Thank you.
Counsel, I just want to make sure that, I don't think it's, it's not a bad idea to refer it, I just don't think it's probably be forced to refer it tonight because it's a resolve.
Okay.
So I think if you wanted to do that, it would be the outcome of this and then we would place it in the dock to refer to committee, because this is being a resolve, but...
So is there... So is there, I think, I actually did speak with Mr. Lucy over this.
We started, that's what we were talking about, to refer it, to flush it out. But we should probably pass it tonight, put it on, put it back on, and then refer it to the proper committee. Should probably think about the committee you want to send it to, too.
Okay, got it. Yep.
Okay. So I do have some lights on. Are you done, Counsel? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the sponsor, Counselor Cologne Hayes. I would love to be a co-sponsor. I, I don't think that it would be out of order to refer it to ordinance to start the discussion. I also don't know if it would be that difficult to amend it, to, to turn it into an ordinance. You know, it's, a resolve is just a non-binding statement of the will of the council. But if we would like it to be an ordinance, I mean, I, I don't see any, any harm in referring it so conversations can start in the ordinance committee. And if we, we decide in the end that there needs to be a separate paper, another one can always be filed. But I don't think we necessarily need to delay it by two weeks. So I would support a referral to ordinance if, if that is what the main sponsor would like. I'd also support passing it on the floor, but the only thing is, I do think we need to flush the language out about what exactly the composition is, who is gonna serve on it, et cetera. I think that's something that is specifically to be discussed in ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there any second? Counsel, you want a second now?
I'm, no, I actually.
Hold on. I'll see a second. All right, Counsel.
No, I, Counselor Hayes, I appreciate you bringing forth this paper. Okay, let's see. Okay, I, I know as we were, you know, last year as we are campaigning, I know youth came and discussed. I know back a few years ago, I had sponsored the Vote 16 resolution. I think we know youth are looking to get involved and engaged, so I appreciate this coming. And I think this was sort of seen as an alternative. We didn't go forward with Vote 16, but this was an alternative way to look at how do we get our youth engaged and, and that. So I think it's exciting. I mean, one of the things I think maybe, Counsel President, I mean, just like our Maplewood Square Committee, I think that was passed as a resolve, not as an ordinance. I mean, an ordinance, I mean, one of the other things, Counselor Hayes, is I learned over the past four years is that, I mean, an ordinance gets tied into our, our ordinances. So we'd actually have to identify that there is the section in our ordinances that we would create a youth council and write, you know, that like we'd have a community preservation committee. So you have a, a very formal way to set up one with a youth, youth commission. Or, you know, through the council president, like we did with Maplewood Square, we can pass a resolve on how we as a council are gonna organize. So that's, that's some of it. I mean, I don't know whether you, the council president just wants to appoint a few members to talk about that, or, I mean, if Counsel, you know, I think, you know, Rules and Ordinance wants to take that on. I, I think we can handle it informally or send it to Rules and Ordinance. I'm, I, I think it, you know, it's just sort of up to the sponsor, I think, what makes sense. Do we want something that's, you know, enshrined in, in ordinance? That's the question. Or is it enough that this be something kind of a, a standing committee that the council creates, just like, like the Maplewood Square Committee or something like that? That's kind of the question we're asking. So I don't have a preference, so I, you know.
Thank you, Counselor. I do some lights. I'm just gonna move along. Counselor Sika and then Counselor Crowe and then Counselor Hayes. So Counselors Sika's first.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. The young woman that spoke in front of us earlier this evening, she said she was part of the Malden Youth Civics Council. So how is this particular committee gonna be different from what they're already doing in the high school? I'm just afraid that, we have 29 committees in the council right now. Some of them, it's March, almost April, and some of them haven't even met already this year. And I, I just feel like we have a lot of overlapping organizations and clubs that the, the youth already, you know, are a part of. So I, I just, I guess my question is, what are we, why are we going to do this when these other clubs and whatever else they're a part of, you mentioned Zonta and all, all these others, we've never closed the door on our youth before. So I just, anytime they've come to us for something, we've always given them the floor. And I'm just afraid that this is just gonna be another committee that we create that never meets. And we have a lot of business in front of us in the city council that is not getting done because we have bogged ourselves down with 29-plus committees that we can't even meet for those. And those are, those are the issues that, listen, I have two young adult children who have absolutely loved volunteering in their community over the years that I've been involved. So I understand how youth wants to be involved in civic engagement. I just feel like, I didn't realize there was a Malden Youth Civics Council. So when she, she came up and spoke about it and mentioned it, it sounds a lot like what you're trying to create here, just with some city councilors on it. So.
All right, she can answer that. So Counsel, you all set, Counsel?
I am, thank you.
So Counselor Crowe, and then we'll go over to Counsel Hayes.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I know this sounds a little counterintuitive, but I kind of agree with Counselor Sika. And we do have lots of things, I mean, because I come from a background of, you know, encouraging teen leadership and really believe in civic engagement in our youth. And, and just as the, the woman spoke tonight and the groups that you have mentioned already, I think instead of creating, and those organizations between the teen center, the rec center, the civic organizations, you know, Zonta, the YMCA, the YWCA, GMAC, the high schoo, all the high schools, we have, you know, they represent hundreds of youth across that, from every part of the, of Malden and the demographics that we have. And I think that we, we should be signaling those groups because it was really kind of sad when she didn't feel like she was being, they were being heard. Signal those groups that we believe in youth empowerment and that our ears are open. And so that, let them do the work that they are doing. We have passed ordinances on, when, when youth have, a YWCA group brought an ordinance to a city council long ago, and that was passed. We've had, you know, someone from Mystic Valley Child School about the, the banning of the plastic bags. I think we should let the groups that have already been standing up and taking on youth leadership roles, let them know, again, that our ears are open and that, that we're here and we do want to hear from them instead of creating another group. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the comments. And to be honest, the youth and I and other people that were involved in this expected to hear these, this feedback and pushback. So we were definitely prepared for that. And so the answers that we had all discussed, what the young woman who came up today, that's not a formalized group, the civics group, and it's not, it's only, she was talking about some members in Malden High School that have like a club afterwards. It's not a formalized group. And it's only Malden High. So the intent of this group is all of Malden youth. This shouldn't be, the whole point was not to have it related to a school so that every youth felt included and they can participate in this. Also, kids who are not involved in school, there are many, as you would know, many youth that are not taking either a second route or they're homeschooled or they're having some troubles and they may not even have graduated from high school. The whole idea was to grab our youth that want to learn about civics wherever they are and have this open to have a formalized city group that they learn from their city councils about government and how to advocate for themselves. The second part was that they were talking about, and again, anyone who works in youth and worked with those groups knows that it's a lot of the same kids in all of those groups. And so the groups are overlapping. That's exactly what we saw. They all knew each other. What we want to do is have this opened up to all of Malden youth. The groups that I mentioned, the nonprofit groups, they don't have a formalized youth council or youth group. What, the reason why I was mentioning them is because they were using youth in a lot of their presentations. So like when we did the forum, a lot of you participated in that. That was some group youth that GMAC mentored. So just so there's no misunderstanding, these groups don't have, except for maybe Zonta, but they're specifically related to Zonta's agenda. This is specifically for civics, government, democratic policy to learn, not, you know, it's very focused. And that's why I did reach out to you to try to talk it through, reached out to Kathy Mack and all of these other group members, too, just to make sure that there was a clear distinction of what this group would do. So again, they, they actually knew also, and we kind of worked through that pushback. So I hope that answers the question. It's very, very different. There is a civics group that meets out of the YMCA, but that's a state. They go to the State House. It's not local. So this is something that is very new. It's never been done in Malden. It has been done in other cities. So I really hope that you support it. And the youth would really appreciate learning about local government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel O'Malley.
So I think the discussion that we're having here tonight is the exact reason why it should get referred to a committee, to flush these ideas out. I don't think that we should, you know, snap this and destroy this idea at this point. I think that this is Counselor Cologne Hayes's initiative, and she should have the opportunity to flush that out in a committee and potentially transform it into something that does interface better with the city council. Maybe it is a student representative similar to the way the school committee has one. But I think there's very many ways in which this initiative can be integrated into our, into our, our system of government, into our, into our city, without it being onerous and, and really providing value. To Counselor Sika's question about the Malden Youth Civics Council, similar to what Counselor Cologne Hayes said, it is a group at Malden High, and they have probably been meeting over the last five or six years. It was founded by Barukti. You might remember Barukti. She went over to Harvard Law, to Harvard, Harvard undergrad. And it's basically continued on, and they do have events during the elections. They have forums. They used to have them at the teen center, and ever since COVID, they've been remote. So I do think it is distinctly separate, whereas the Malden Youth Civics Council is more political. This is more, I think, governmental interaction, which ideally would be separate and would bring that youth perspective to the city council and to the city, similar to, at least I'm envisioning it, modified the way that the school committee embraces the youth voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counselor McDonald, sorry, it only has the first letters. Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I don't have a comment at this point. I'm just trying to understand what's the best committee to send this to and do we want, and so, because I agree, there is a need for more discussion about this. And, and I think there's lots of, there's lots of value here, and we just need to figure out what the right way to get it done is. So I really appreciate all the work that you've done, Counsel Colin Hayes, to get us to this point. And I would just like to know if ordinance is the right place to send it, or if there is another option.
Go side bys.
Counsel, could I ask a question of?
You have the floor, Counsel McDonald.
Counselor Crowe, do you think that it makes sense to send this to ordinance to, for further discussion?
I think what Counsel Winslow had said about, you know, really, you know, if you send it to ordinance, you really take it into another.
Is that what it's called?
Level. So I'm not sure if it's, if it's more informal, especially since it has to be. So I'm not sure which committee would be.
Okay, so, hold on one second. I, I got, I got some stuff in order. So Counselor, Counselor McDonald, you all, you all set?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Let me just go in order because I know some people have already spoken. So Counsel Murphy, you're next.
Thank you. And if I miss something, I do apologize. It's been kind of a crazy week. Did Counselor Hayes, did you send out like a formal procedure?
Yeah.
Okay, you did. Okay, then I, I do apologize for missing that because I tend to, you know, I see the value in engaging the children, our students, our young people in civics. But I also, just seeing what's happened here on the council since January, I'm going to kind of err on the side of what Counselor Sika is saying. We have so much on our plate. And that's not to say that our youth is not important. But we are not getting the job of our council business done. And I really think that at this point in time, it's where there are so many groups out there that are working on leadership efforts, that it's in our best interest to stay focused on what we need to get done in this term for our constituents because we will be going on break in three months. And we have a budget coming up. We have a lot of roadwork coming up. We have basically all of the, the information, the oppo money that our residents have elected us to make sure that we utilize in the most effective way possible. And although this is the best intention, I just think our plate is still full at this point, that where there are other organizations that are, you know, leading our youth, are engaging them in this process, that this, the timing of this is just not appropriate. And as Counsel Sika said, we have committees that have not even met or that just met for the first time last week after being in office for three months already. So, you know, for tonight, I'm a no on this. Not to say that I'm a no forever, but I just don't think it's the right timing for what we have facing us.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Murphy. The lights just keep coming. Counsel Sika and then Counsel Winslow. Do them in the order they came in. Counsel.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um...
Are you eating, Counselor?
What is it?
Are you eating?
I have a, I have a cough drop in my mouth. I apologize.
Drop it in the quorum. Should be talking with your mouth full.
Counselor McDonald, I think that maybe this paper would be good in either Personnel and Appointments or the Age Friendly Committee. I know the Age Friendly one was probably more for seniors, but it says age friendly. So it could be for our youth as well, not just for having ideas with, with the seniors. So with that, and Counsel O'Malley, you made me think and remember, I don't know if I'm saying her name right, but Barukti, she used to come with a whole group and we'd listen to them. Why, why did they, did they stop coming to council meetings because of COVID? Because maybe that group should stop coming back again. It doesn't necessarily need to be a committee that we create with three councilors on it. And, because I, I just feel like this committee, I, I, if it was to pass maybe one counselor, one person from the school committee, I read the resolve that Greg sent out last week, and it seems like a lot of the ideas that you had on it were more related to the school committee representatives than actually what councilors. Like, you know, creating youth groups and responsibilities and things like that, that seems like that would be more of a school committee issue than it would be the city council issue. But I, I'm not gonna take up any more time. I just want, I just wanted to point out that we have two committees that we could possibly send it to, Personnel and Appointments or Age Friendly. And maybe the Malden Youth Civics Council can start coming back because they came before us for that whole 16 and voting thing. And, and there was multiple other things. I remember them being at the senior center every Tuesday that we were on TV. They were there with their notebooks. They were eager to learn. And I, I don't see why that should stop. I, I just, I, I don't necessarily know if a committee with councilors on it is the way to go. So thank you.
All right, going in order, Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, I know, you know, one of the things, and I guess I have to look a little bit more, I mean, I actually think maybe we should maybe empower Counselor Hayes to work with the youth to come back and present a proposal. Because ultimately, I mean, I think what, what we want to do is set some structure up that, that continues. Maybe it's like the Interfaith Council that the mayor has, that, that in a way that make, there are gonna be pockets of kids. And are they working together? And are we making sure we have that, that interaction? And really, I mean, I know, I haven't done as much work with youth as many other people here, but I, I know it's very important to feel youth to be, feel empowered and that their voices are heard. So I think some, some ways of getting their input. I mean, I think the other challenge of working with youth I've found is that you get, you know, why doesn't Barukti come back? She graduated. So I think that's always the challenge of how do we set up a structure that makes sure that we kind of, you know, there's always other kids in the pipeline so that it's, it's a consistent structure that, but I mean, I think ultimately isn't the goal here to really make sure the youth are organized and, and have the opportunity to come here. So is it something?
And all youth, yeah. All youth, not just Malden High. I just want to keep saying that. It's not Malden High School thing. That, that was the, the specific ask from our youth, which came from all over, was that it was not placed in the school. And it was more to learn about civics. And the proposal that I sent out, and I did have a couple of phone calls, I left lots of messages with Counsel Spatafora, with Peg Crowe, and Greg Lucy, and a couple of, asking how to best present this forward, knowing, and the, the feedback I got was, bring it up, refer it to committee. So that it's, that, that's how you flush out these ideas, because it's definitely different than what Counsel Seeka is, is envisioning. And Counsel Murphy, it's just, it's government and civics and things that people and adults have been saying that students and youth should be more involved in. So now it's just time to put our, you know, actions behind this. And aside from, I just want to address also about another committee. I, I totally understand about another committee, which is why I was going back and forth on how to, you know, how to best move forward. But the youth on this council can help us with so many things. They can help with the tech committee, they can help with the environment committee, they can help with the age friendly committee. That is the whole point of this youth. It will actually lessen our workload, and I definitely can take out some counselors. This is just a draft. I agree. I think three is even too much too, but the whole point was to refer it somewhere and flush these details out. So I really would appreciate the support on that, and so would our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I have to echo some of the sentiments here on some of the counselors. We have a great many committees, subcommittees, more than I've ever seen in my time on being on the council. And it does bog things down. I mean, I heard about referring to Personnel Appointments Committee. You know, that, that committee is, is definitely one that's utilized quite a bit. You know, we, you know, you've heard me before, talk up here about, you know, we have reappointments. Maybe it's a good idea unless a particular council has an issue, we voted out on the floor, because what happens, it starts bottlenecking this committee. So as the chairman of this committee, I can, I can tell you, I mean, listen, I'll, I'll take on whatever the council wants to give me. But I'm telling you that this committee is pretty inundated on a weekly basis. So I, personally myself, I would make a recommendation, I'll actually, I'm going to make a motion to table it. And table and motion, I think, sets precedent, doesn't it? Thank you very much.
But you want a discussion on the table and motion?
I don't want any discussion. I want to just, I want my motion to be carried.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. So Counsel Condon said second. Okay. So what that means is we table it, and then you can reintroduce my, my recommendation before, I'm going to speak on the table motion, because I can. My concern was, I was not comfortable referring a resolve to committee. I, I, I've gone through enough complaints on, on proper procedure. I am not going to take a referral and send it to any committee. So if that motion came up, I just could not support it. That's just how I feel, given what's going on with, with how we've looked at these rules and interpreted it. My interpretation is, it's a resolve, it can't be referred. We refer everything on full council nights to refer it to committee. It's nothing against the paper, just proper procedure. There is a tabling motion. I do have a second, Counsel Condon. I will, I will have the, any discussion on the table motion?
Yeah.
All right, hold on. So Counsel, Counselor, any, any discussion on the table motion, Counsel Seminelli?
There's no discussion.
There's no discussion on the, on the table and motion. I asked for the, I asked for the motion to be moved.
He asked for the vote.
Can I ask a point?
You could ask a point of order, Mr. McDonald.
Clerk Lucy, so if we table it, then at a future date, we could vote to remove it from the table if, for example, we had an update to the resolve that we then wanted to consider?
What happens on a, anything that's tabled ends up on the council docket. So the next council docket that we have?
Take it out of order.
It's going to be down there as a table item. Anyone at any point can make a motion to take it back up. So you don't have to put it on there. It's going to be on the agenda.
Got it. Okay. And at that point, we could discuss and then vote.
Absolutely.
Or you could, next week, refer it to a committee, and then vote to refer it to, oh, two weeks, refer it to the committee.
Okay. But you just told us we can't refer it to a committee.
Well, because it's, it's put on the paper as a resolve.
Oh, okay.
So in two weeks, you could say, I want to refer this to whatever committee the, the group decides to refer to.
So it's in the wrong place on the agenda.
No, it's a resolve. It's the right place. But I think what we're trying to do is, is, you know, create something out of what I personally don't think is the right procedure to take a resolve and refer it to a committee.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
All right. So Clerk will call the roll on the tabling motion.
Move the motion.
Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
What'd you say, Counsel? No, you said no.
Seeka.
Yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes, and I'd be happy to work with Counsel Hayes to, when we get it, make some changes, so let's plan this meeting.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Kerry's eight to two.
All right. So that, that paper, that resolve is tabled, and I'll just repeat what the clerk said for the public, because I think there are some issues with the microphone. So the resolve will be tabled, be at the, the docket. It can be brought out of the, if there's a tabling motion, we can discuss it. And the other option, which I think was being discussed, is taking this, flushing it out and sending it to a committee. There was some debate on what committee to send it to. Counsel Winslow made some great points about, you know, the challenges with an ordinance committee, and other councils certainly chose some good places to, to send it. But I think at the end of the day, I think the council supports the idea and just wants to send it to a committee to flush out those thought processes, and come back to full council with a more refined paper. Next order of business.
The Chair of Finance has asked that I read all these finance papers together.
Okay. Any objections to reading all the finance papers together? Hearing none and seeing none, the clerk will read all the finance papers, so we can do one motion to refer.
Paper 139-22, order that $250,000 is appropriated from available general fund free cash to fund human resource professional services. Paper 140-22, order that $1 million is appropriated to pay costs of the Devon Park Revitalization Project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereof. To meet the appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law Chapter 44, 7, 1, or any other enabling authority into issue bonds and notes of the city thereof. Paper 141-22, order that the 450, $445,000 is appropriated from available water sewer retained earnings to pay costs of designing and replacing lead water service lines throughout the city, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereof. Paper 142-22, order that $3 million is appropriated to pay costs of designing and replacing lead water service lines throughout the city, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 8, 5, or any enabling authority into issue bonds and notes of, for the city thereof. All or any portion of this amount may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority's Lead Service Line Replacement Program, and the mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to execute and deliver any agreements or other documents in, in connection therewith. Paper 133-22, order that $5,683,200 is appropriated to pay costs of designing, reconstructing, and constructing water mains, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 8, 5, or any other enabling authority into issue bonds and notes of the city therefore. All, all or any portion of this amount may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority's Local Water System Assistance Program, and the mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to execute and deliver any agreements or other documents in connection therewith. And Paper 144-22, order that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 164, Section 134, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, got ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Yeah.
You're trying to take Kerry's, McDonald's, Thunder. Can you speak into the mic, one second? One second. I want to make sure. Counsel Murphy, speak into the mic, please.
To refer to finance.
Okay. On Counsel Murphy's motion to refer to the paper to finance, all those papers to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All those papers are referred to finance. Next order of business.
Now, Paper 144-22, order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 134, the City of Malden initiate a process to authorize appropriate departments to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load in the City of Malden and for other related services in consultation with the Department of Energy Resources, and to develop a plan for review by its citizens detailing the process and consequences of aggregation. May I have a letter from the mayor?
Okay. Do you want Mr. McDonald to speak first? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Thanks. I just wanted to speak very briefly about this, because we're going to refer this hopefully to the Finance Committee and be able to talk in more detail. But I just wanted to explain a little bit about what this is. This comes from the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Commission, which was started years ago by our august council president, and I'm now the member and chair of. And it's something they've been working on for years. And the basic idea here is that, you know, the state requires us to use renewable energy as part of the, as part of the electricity that we pay for. And you can, there's a minimum, but you can also do more. And so what that leads to right now is people getting calls from, you know, and getting harassed by these companies that are trying to add things to your bills, and that always seem to have, you know, a surprising trigger where the price goes up a few months later. So over 100 communities have done something else, which is that the city steps in and works directly with renewable energy companies to get a good price on energy that can be automatically added into your bill. Because there's no Costco of wind farms out there. You have to go and you have to bid this individually. But this is basically bulk energy purchasing. It's something, as I said, that the state, the many communities have done, including our neighbors in Medford, Melrose, and Stonem. So we know a good, we know a good amount about what this process looks like. It's defined in law about how it gets approved by the state. And while it's not necessarily about trying to cut your electricity bill, you do have the ability to opt in or out, and you really do get better rates and stable rates for your customers. So if you look at, you know, the way this will work is you'll kind of add in some renewable energy as a default, and then you can go all the, you know, you can go to 100% renewable. You can choose that if you want to as a resident. And if you look at the rates that Melrose, Medford, and Stonem all have right now, if you, their 100% renewable rate is all less than the standard national grid rate right now. So they're getting a great deal, and this is something that we're missing out on. It's a bit of a process that's going to involve public, there has to be a public hearing and so on. So we're working with Eric Rubin in the Public Facilities Department and the mayor's staff to figure out how all that will work as we work with the state. This is just to get the ball rolling. The state requires that the, the authorizing body, in this case, the city council, pass an order from the mayor. So that's what we're going to discuss. We'll talk more about the process in the Finance Committee, and hope to ultimately, of course, have your support. I think this will be a, a very popular consumer protection and great way to advance our energy efficiency and sustainability goals for the city.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Counsel Winslow, do you mind if we just read the mayor's letter in first, and then we can circle around? So there might be some more questions after the clerk reads the mayor's letter in, so.
Dear Honorable Members, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 164, Section 134 pertaining to load aggregation programs, I write to express my support of adopting a municipal electrical aggregation program for the City of Malden. The implementation of an energy aggregation program is aimed at providing residents with city-vetted options for electrical supply. The program will allow us to secure electricity on behalf of our residents at a competitive rate, as well as using the collective buying power to provide affordable and renewable electricity. This would be another important step forward in our community, becoming more environmentally conscious, while at the same time providing the potential of cost savings and price stability. In accordance with Mass General Laws, I am initiating the process to adopt such a program, which will now require the approval of the attached order by the city council. After this step, the process required by the state to formally enroll will involve the development of a plan in consultation with the Division of Energy Resources, as well as a community review and engagement process. This initiative has the support of our Energy, Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Commission, led by City Council Kerry McDonald, as well as our Director of Public Facilities, Eric Rubin. There are roughly 150 communities in Massachusetts that already have this, this in place as of February 2022. Thank you for your consideration, and in the meantime, please let me know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Gary Christiansen, Mayor Malden.
Okay. Thank you. Now, questions. Counsel, Counsel McDonald, you done? Okay. So Counsel Winslow.
No, I'm, it's great to see the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Committee has taken this on. I think several years ago, actually, the council referred this to the committee, because we said, this is why we have this committee, to work on this. And it took a while to kind of re-energize that committee, and it's good to know that they're moving forward. And I appreciate, Counselor, you're doing your work here. And I think it is a, it's a very interesting proposal, and I think, as you hear, I think it just can be beneficial, both financially as well as environmentally for everybody in the community. So it's great to know that we're, we're moving ahead on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you. Thank you to the sponsor for bringing, for making this, this progress on this. As Counsel Winslow stated, I think it was back in 2017, a while ago, we did have a presentation before the, the full body of the council. I can't remember if it was referred to formally or not. But at the time, I, I think probably the market's better in terms of what's going on with renewable energy. If possible, I would love to be a co-sponsor and look forward to seeing this come to fruition. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else want to be a co-sponsor? It looks like everybody's, everybody's a co-sponsor, unless you're up, so. With the full council on. Anybody else? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll just speak on this. So Counsel is correct. I want to congratulate Counsel McDonald, and certainly the Energy Efficiency Committee for getting this through. It was a long process. I know at one point, there was a lot of, you know, the sourcing companies were putting types of practices that would not allow you to change that. It was very hard. They were blocking the accounts in some cases. There was some question about the ability to opt out, because some people, if they did raise rates, there was always a question for some other municipalities. And then the class one, which I think is going to be around 20% renewable, that wasn't really a high number several years ago, like Counsel O'Malley said. So now that number is a higher number, and hopefully to grow. So I think with all those changes, and certainly the committee just staying unfocused, it was great to see that we have the functionality in place, and now we'll go to the Finance Committee to discuss it, and hopefully get this one over the finish line. So a lot of work, many years. This was not an easy one, but I think laws have changed, renewables have changed, so it's, it's good to get this in, in practice in the community. So congratulations. So on Counsel McDonald's referral, referring to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's referred to finance. Next order of business.
Paper 79-22, order be hereby ordained by the Malden City Council that Section 4.24.050, 4.24.070, 4.24.080, 4.24.110, 4.24.120, and 4.24.180 of the delayed, delayed before demolition or alteration ordinance of Title 4.24 Code of the City of Malden, Chapter 4 of the City Revised Ordinance of 2020 be amended as follows.
On Counselor Crowe's motion to ordain the ordinance as amended, clerk will call the roll. You want to speak, Counsel? Okay.
I got a second on that.
I do need a second? I entertain a second? Okay. I saw Counsel Seeka's hand first, so Counsel Seeka? I do need a second. I entertain a second. Okay, I saw Counsel Sika's hand first, so Counsel Sika.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
McDonald. Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Sika. Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. On next paper, 3622.
Paper 4, 450.
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. Yep, you got it, Clerk.
452-21, order be hereby ordained the revised ordinance of 2020, Section 12.28.060. Obstructions be, be amended as follows.
On Counselor Crowe's motion to ordain the ordinance as amended, seconded by, come on, Counsel McDonald, raise your hand again. Counsel McDonald, Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe. Lenny Hearn. McDonald. Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Sika. Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business.
Paper 36-22, order be hereby ordained that Title 1, Section 12 of the Code of the City of Malden be amended to the new ward precinct boundaries submitted by the city councils, the local election district review commission, and approved on December 10th, 2021.
Say, on Counselor Crowe's motion to ordain? Ordain? What are you guys screwing me for? It's an ordinance, though. That's why it's saying, it, yeah. Excuse me, Counsel? Do you real, I mean, really, you want us to be on motion? No, it's not my motion. It says Counsel Crowe. She's the chairman of ordinance. On Counsel Crowe's motion to refer, excuse me, on Counsel Crowe's motion, or, motion to ordain as amended and seconded by Counsel O'Malley, the clerk will call the roll. Is everybody's happy? Win-win?
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Siminelli.
Siminelli, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business.
Okay, so it would be, uh, the Chair of License has asked that I read, uh, every of the licenses except for the last one. Paper number four, 146-22, Committee Report License Petitions, Papers 99-22, 100-22, 101-22. The Committee, after been, having been referred the following papers and after reviewing the same, recommend that, recommend that petitions be granted. Paper 99-22, Extended Hours Supreme Food Mart, 1018 Eastern Ave, Malden, 24 hours, seven days a week. It's a renewal. Paper 100-22, Petition Taxi Cab Licenses, Malden Transportation, 292 Eastern Ave, Malden, nine taxi cabs. It's renewals. And Paper 101-22, Petition Lodging House License, BREP, LHP, LLC, 155 Clinton Street, Malden, 17 rooms. It's a renewal.
Okay. On Counselor Sika's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor? All opposed? Committee report is received. Counsel Sika for the committee. You want to make a motion? Oh, sorry. Counselor Sika, your mic should be hot. There you go.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. Okay, so the committee, um, License Committee met last Tuesday. We went over all of these renewals. Compliance said none of them had any issues. So we, um, reported it amount favorably, so motion to approve.
Any questions for the committee report? I did hear a second. Is that Counsel Winslow? Okay, on, so on Counsel Sika, Sika's motion for, uh, to grant these petitions, seconded by Counsel Winslow.
Aye.
All in favor? All opposed? Looks like they passed unanimously.
Counsel Spatafora, since my mic is still on?
Yep, I'm going to let you.
Can I make, I, I would like to recuse myself from voting on Regano's towing. It's my uncle.
So on Counsel Sika's motion to recuse herself, seconded by Counsel Siminelli, Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Sika.
Yes.
Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Counsel Sika is recused. Don't go too far. It's going to be a quick. Okay, on Counsel Condon's motion to grant, do you want to read it? Did you already read it?
I didn't, so it's.
No, let him, let him read it first, Counsel Condon.
Paper 115-22, Petition Class 2 Regano's Towing Service, 1152 Eastern Ave.
So on Counsel Condon's motion to grant, seconded by Counsel, was that Siminelli? Siminelli? Clerk will call the roll.
Call the roll or just take a voice?
No, I just want to do a roll, Clerk, because she's abstaining, so.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Siminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Motion, uh, grant, license is granted. I think it's nine, nothing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Nine, nothing. I'm just letting everybody know on the mic, I'm repeating this because our, our past clerk, Cheryl Flamatto, sent me a quick email during, uh, one of the meetings and said that she's having trouble hearing us. So I'm trying to make sure that we're speaking a little bit louder and making sure the mics are on just for the, the general public, which I've heard in the past. I don't know if it's the way we're speaking or it's the microphones, but just keep that in mind for everybody.
Docket is clear.
Docket is clear. So personal privilege, Counsel Winslow, looks like he's got his light first. Counsel Winslow.
So just, uh, this coming Sunday is the start of Ramadan, so all our Muslim, uh, residents, I just wish you a, a pleasant Ramadan. And then, uh, I also wanted to say that this past weekend, um, I went to UMA, and they, they had a photo gallery and videos about the Malden River. And, uh, of course, our, our kind of Karen Buck, our Malden River Keeper, was, uh, featured there. It featured videos from the Malden Catholic and photos from Malden High students. It's really good. You can go over to UMA, uh, that the photos are there this month. And then this coming, uh, Sunday, um, there's two shifts of cleanup on the Malden River. 10 o'clock and 12:15, all starting at the Tufts Boat House, um, that is in Medford, but, um, they'll be cleaning up the Malden River. So just, uh, uh, it looks like a busy Sunday for some people.
So that's this Sunday, Counsel? I don't, I, did anybody hear that?
This Sunday, April 3rd. Um, yeah, there's, there's cleanup starting at the Tufts Boat House of the Malden River, so, yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Sika, uh, excuse me, Counsel Winslow, Counselor Sika.
Thank you. I just want to, um, give everybody some upcoming dates so they can save the dates on their calendars. On, um, Saturday, April 16th, Counsel Spatafora and I will host our annual egg hunt. I haven't posted any details yet, other than it's going to start at 10 a.m. Because we had, working on, um, a way to change it up a bit this year and have a little bit of a different egg hunt than we normally have. So details will be, um, soon, and within the next coming, coming weeks, to see if we can pull it off. We, we started a, a new idea a little late, so we're waiting to see if, if we can get it approved and, and have it done. If not, we'll have our regular annual egg hunt at Linden Park Hunting Field at, um, 10 o'clock that morning. So both of them, regardless of what the final details are, will be on Saturday, April 16th, at 10 o'clock. So look forward, um, to posts or emails and everything from us. Also, um, we have scheduled the Ward Eight Earth Day Cleanup Day. It is going to be held on Saturday, April 23rd. That will start at 9 o'clock and run till 1. The list of street sweeping will come out within the week before. We have also teamed up with, um, a vendor called Help See, and we'll be having a clothing drive at the Linden Steam Academy during that timeframe, where you're going to be able to drop off clothing. And the proceeds from that clothing drive will benefit, um, Malden Public Schools Activity Fund. So all Malden Public Schools will benefit from that clothing drive. That is also Saturday, April 23rd. The details on all of that will be as follow, will be to follow us as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Sika. Counsel O'Malley.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, so I just wanted to let the community know, uh, the city of Malden, uh, we decided to close Pleasant Street again. You know, we figured it just, it wasn't really working out, so we're going to close it again, uh, to see how that works. I also want to wish everyone a happy April Fool's Day. That's coming up. Uh, I also want to, want to wish our, our Muslim community a happy Ramadan, which is coming up, uh, later this week. Thank you.
Okay, any other lights? Okay, from the, the chair, uh, happy Ramadan. I want to start with that. I also want to wish my youngest a belated birthday, Mar, Liliana, it was 10 on the 19th. I didn't get the opportunity to wish her happy birthday publicly. For some reason, they like when they say their name, unlike us, uh, publicly. And finally, I, I do want to, uh, address something that I think, uh, unfortunately doesn't also, al, always get taught in, in high school. But today's a pretty big day for the United States, not in a good way, but certainly profound. The Emmett Till Anti-Lynchings Bill was passed, which overtook over 100 years, which is disgusting in many ways. But Emmett Till, for those who probably don't know, I didn't learn in high school, was a young boy who was beaten to death because he made a comment to a white woman. Uh, they found him in a river, and it was actually, if you read up on it, the woman actually lied. He never whistled or cackled. Uh, so he was beaten for, for no reason, and the mother made a point back in the, uh, I think, late 60s to say, leave the casket open so you could see what you said, did to my son. Uh, and it took, you know, almost a century for us to get an anti-lynchings bill. So now it's weird to say, but, uh, lynching is now a federal hate crime, uh, and Biden, uh, passed that today. So it's a pretty big day, I think, uh, for the United States, recognizing that lynching should be, uh, a federal crime and certainly hate crime. So a big shout out to, I think, Congress for getting this one right, which sometimes they always don't get together and get the votes right. So it's worth mentioning. Uh, it's sad that it took us this long, but happy that it did get, uh, finally passed. And with that, I'll take Counselor, uh, Crowe's motion, seconded by Counsel Sika. Counsel is adjourned.